I'd just like to, while there's still work to be done prior to the start, but I will say, you know, the buildings they have been through look great and the facilities department's doing a tremendous job getting us ready to go. And so with that, I don't know, Dr. Alan Emma, you can speak a little bit just to the workshop presented as we had with the leadership team.
Sure. Good morning, everyone. Happy to. As everyone knows, we're continuing with our themes around, you know, meeting the needs of the whole student and building inclusive communities. And so we've continued, like all of our professional development, we are going with best practices, which is ongoing embedded continual work rather than kind of one time set and gets that research shows us is not as effective. So for our leadership team, we had time again with both Lisa Decker and Sarah Wick. And although they're two very different people, nationally recognized experts who have been in our district for many, many years now and know us well enough with what's our next step and where are we going next? So we were able to really, and none of these things are silos or separate. We're really able to overlap the work and be thinking about, you know, our students, where they are and how we can shift and adjust both as teachers and as leadership and how leadership can better support teachers to be able to meet those needs of the students in all the very different places that they are. And looking, starting to look at some of our structures and really thinking about which of our structures are supports and entryways to inclusion and to celebrating the whole child versus what are some obstacles, hurdles, et cetera, that we are looking in the mirror, taking a look at ourselves and saying, what can we do to improve that structure? And it also ties in so nicely with our work with the WIFI grant around grading for equity and just thinking about our practices and protocols and procedures that we have in schools that how we can keep shifting to best adjust students, whether it's around anti-bias, special education, any of our students who may feel disenfranchised in any way and supporting students that don't feel that way as well. How do we make environments to meet all of those needs? So I think it was really helpful and particularly helpful in light of kind of coming back from the pandemic and really calling this more like, knocking on the wood right now, are more of our pandemic reset year? Because even though we were back last year, there was so much coming and going of people still through the COVID issues. So we're hoping for more consistency this year. So, thank you. Thanks, Dr. Alan Emma.
Thank you.
Dr. Hackett.
I just want to mention that WinCam normally is on these sessions with us and they broadcast live. We are actually recording this meeting. So for all participants, please know that we are recording the meeting. And the purpose is for us to give that to WinCam so that they can then post the meeting on their website. So a couple of other things quickly, we are still in the throes of hiring. We have, I think, have made a lot of progress with a lot of positions, but we still do have some key positions open. We do have our out of district coordinator position is open currently, as well as our social emotional learning position is open here in the central office. And we're, we have posted for both of those and anticipating that we'll be launching into the hiring process fairly soon on both of those positions. Across the board, we still have various positions that we're trying to fill. Some will be a little bit more challenging than others, but I think overall we are, we are in pretty good shape to begin the school year with. And certainly we'll be ready to go once, once we do start. We have been in constant conversation with the Department of Health, specifically with Jen Murphy. Jen Markham, our nursing director, myself, Jen Murphy have talked several times in preparation for the new year. Wide ranging conversations, but obviously on people's minds as well as on our minds is still managing COVID. And the CDC has come out with some guidance, I believe, last week. The Department of Education came out with some guidance last week. We're anticipating additional guidance this week to be coming from, at least from the Department of Education, which may or may not happen, but we did have a, the commissioner called a full meeting of all superintendents across the state last week and just went through some of the steps and measures, which are candidly pretty thin. There is, there are no mask mandates, there are no testing requirements. The department is not collecting data specifically this year either. So we are to a certain extent kind of on our own. That does not mean that, and what that does mean is that, you know, we need to make sure that we're doing what we think we need to do to protect our students and our staff or some of the things that we will have in place to a certain extent, it'll look like it looked when we ended the year last year. We'll still have opt-in masking for students and staff, people, visitors in the building. Masking will still be required in all health offices. That is per, I believe, per CDC, at least the Department of Health. We will be doing symptomatic testing at school and/or we will provide the testing kits to families to go home with. If we have a student who is sick, we do have a full supply of test kits. We will continue to make sure that we have test kits on hand and make them available. We'll work with the health department here to on vaccine vaccination clinics. We'll be putting some information on that out today as well as PCR test clinics that will be happening as well through the Department of Health. So those are kind of startup items. We still have some details to work through. And from the standpoint of just making sure that we have, we're doing everything that we can for our kids. We have ventilation, as you know, testing was done last year. We've done some additional testing over the course of summer. We will have the HEPA air filtration units in place in the classrooms and schools that we had them in place last year. We will still be encouraging the teachers and staff to keep in the buildings that this applies to, to keep windows cracked as well as on our buses, to keep windows crack on our school buses as well. But as you know, in, for example, at the high school with the filtration system or the HVAC system is state of the art. So cracking windows actually does not help in that environment. We talked about pool testing, but even when it was in play with the department, if we were going to do pool testing, they would be completely on our own to do that. We would need to go through the consent process and handle consent process, which was not handled by us last year. That was done through the state with a contract. We also, just looking at the data from last year, the overall number of positive tests that resulted from pool testing was less than 1%. So the, the effort to do that, when you talk about a team of four to five people per school, just doesn't seem to make sense, given what we experienced last year for the actual result of how many, how many students turned up positive through pooled testing. We are in conversations still and looking to likely use some Essar funding for this to hire a part-time COVID point person. We think it's important for us to maintain someone who is on staff in a part-time basis, who is paying attention to this all the time is a priority. So that discussion is in process. We may be able to reach out to some former staff who helped us with that last year, which obviously would be a lot smoother. We are going to require, strongly suggest that parents self-report positive test cases for, on a Google sheet that we had put in place last year so that we have those data to have some sense. You know, again, it's a limited pool. It's also a pool of data that is voluntary. So we have really no real control over that, but I do think it's important. We do think it's important that we, we collect data on positive testing that is done at home through, from our parents. So that will be rolled out as well. Parents should be used to that. We've not decided at this point in terms of the public facing nature of those data. What we'd like to do is get started with it and see what kind of participation we have. Because what we don't want to do is have, you know, have over three, two weeks or so, have five test reports come in and, you know, put that, put those data out because obviously the idea would be we want to provide information for parents to have some sense of what's trending. We would, we certainly encourage parents who are particularly concerned to pay attention to any kind of data put out by the Department of Public Health, wastewater data, I think at this point is probably the most reliable source of data, given the fact that there is no more required testing. We also think that the COVID point person is important for us to start the year with. It may go all year, but in the hopefully unlikely or hopefully an event where we don't have a surge in cases, we don't want to be caught flat footed. If we have a surge of cases, we want to make sure that we have the systems in place in the very beginning of this school year. And really, we're very fortunate because the systems we had in place last year were, in my view, quite effective. We had good staffing. So we think it's worth the spending the money from Essar funding for us to have that COVID point person to begin the year. Those are, I'm just checking real quickly. Those are at a high level points of where we are right now. We'll be putting out information to, to staff and families this week as part of our welcoming back information. But I am happy to answer any questions from the committee if, if you have any. I know this is a topic of certainly of, of interest and of import.
Mr. Hopcraft.
I'll just say, I appreciate the situation the district is in and all the work you're doing, given the headwinds out there. We have to do this as we can. And I think having a COVID coordinator is a, you know, a great move. And, you know, I know there are families out there. They've been in touch with us. Yeah, they're very concerned still. And so appreciate all the work that we're doing to try to meet those needs.
I will just say, and I'm sure that there are school systems doing things. We, we've been in a little bit of a vacuum and I think it's probably partly the nature of the time of the school year, but there has not been much chatter at all on the superintendent's listservs or in the regional groups around anything that other school systems are doing. So I don't really have a good sense of what, what other towns are doing for the start of the school year at this point. But that should be, that will be information that should be forthcoming over the next week or so.
And I'd imagine, Dr. Hackett, a lot of school districts still may have information up on their pages from last year. Those get updated at the beginning of the school year as well.
Or, or don't, which is the other thing that we want to be careful about. So we, as you know, last year we did launch a, we had a website specific for COVID mitigation. We will have, we'll have a page perhaps of some information, but we really want to be careful. We've, we're going through to make sure that we're not putting, just bringing over what we had in place last year into, into this site so that there's, you know, no confusion because obviously it looked a lot different with testing.
Right. To make sure that all of our information is up to date and parents know where to find it and know that it's current as well. Are there any, Ms. Bollinaze?
Yes, thank you. I was just wondering with the COVID point person, do we still have in place the person whom we had been engaging last year? I think her name is Stephanie. Excuse me if I missed the name.
So we, that, that Stephanie would be our go-to. We're, I know people who are having conversations at this point. That's, that's all I can say. I don't have a commitment. That would be ideally what we do because she just knows, you know, she knows the system. She knows the people.
Right. I was just wondering if we've had to, yes, I was just wondering about that. So, thank you.
Well, we certainly appreciate all the conversations you've been having with Jen Murphy and Jen Markham. Knowing that you're handling it at the operational level and working with our nursing expert and the Department of Public Health is certainly helpful. And we look forward to a good school year and hopefully can keep everybody healthy and safe this year. So we really appreciate all the background work you've been doing to make that happen for the school year. If there are no other questions, I will move on to the meeting minutes. Seeing none, I'm going to remove the August 4th meeting minutes. I had a number of clarifications I wanted to make on those, but I'm happy to take a motion to approve the July 26 minutes if no one has any objection to that.
No mood.
Second.
All in favor on lead a roll call, Mr. Hopcraft?
Aye.
Ms. Bollinaze?
Aye.
Mr. Nixon?
Aye.
Chair votes aye and the minutes for the 26th are approved. We will now move on to our report and discussion items. We first have with us Mr. Charlie Hay from Tappah Architects. As the work continues on our Lynch School Building Project, they are preparing for the submission of the schematic designs to the MSBA on September 1st. And I believe Mr. Hay has some updated slides to share with us on the current status of that project and the information that MSBA and the town will receive. And we're excited to have you here with us this morning. Mr. Hay.
Thank you very much and I'm happy to share, I'm essentially going to share with you the slides that were the most recently presented to the School Building Committee. And, and chat a little bit about where we are relative to the sort of process of submitting to the MSBA. So I'm going to do the usual thing and hopefully in a moment, share my screen with you. All right. Can you there see the screen? Yep. Okay, great.
Looks good.
Very good. Thank you. So, as you mentioned, Madam Chair, we are submitting to the MSBA on the 1st of September, which is next Thursday, week from this Thursday. We continue to work on the project up till the last minute, of course. We had an excellent security meeting a week or so ago with District Dr. Hackett and his team and our security consultants. The estimate has been issued to both our cost consultant and the OPM's cost consultant. So the MSBA requires two cost estimates at schematic design. Those cost estimates are then reconciled, which means the estimator is actually meet and go line item by line item through the estimates. And what the MSBA is looking for is any, you know, significant differences in opinion. And the theory is that if you have two estimators who generally agree on the scope, then you're much more likely to have a thorough final estimate. The estimate of record is the designer's estimate, but there will have been two estimates done. Those two estimates will have been reviewed together. So the estimates are due back to us tomorrow at the latest. They will be reconciled on Thursday. So by the end of the week, we will have full estimates. Those estimates are then built into a project, an overall project budget by the OPM. And that's really what's given to the MSBA. So the MSBA is of course very, as are, as are all of us, very interested in the construction cost, but we're most primarily interested in the project budget, which includes all the soft costs as well. So designer fees and furniture and technology and all those good things. We also had an excellent technology meeting with the district recently in our technology consultant, which is great. Get a handle on what the district's goals and vision are for technology at the Lynch. That will be, excuse me, built into the budget. And as I mentioned, by the first, we should be submitting a package. The package really is two pieces. One is the drawings and an outline specification. The second is kind of another binder. So at each submission, we do a binder and the binder kind of contains all of the data that the MSBA is interested in. And it includes a lot of narratives from all of our consultants talking about systems. So the mechanical consultant not only does drawings, the sort of conceptual drawings of the mechanical system, they also write a narrative that goes along with it. This sort of says, this is our approach. And so there's a lot of that. We do, we have done, as you know, I think supplemental geo-technical work out there, which will be included. There's, there's sustainable design criteria is outlined in the submission. Of course, an updated educational space template is part of this, which will be very similar to the approved study template. It shouldn't change dramatically. But they want to keep a check on that and make sure nothing is sort of going sideways relative to, to their approved space summary. And then of course, the all-important budget information, which I've just mentioned, and project schedule and then various sort of supporting documents. So all of that gets bound together and that will be submitted on the first. And relative to project progress, you've seen a site plan. The site plan hasn't changed dramatically. This site plan shows a couple of changes that the district has requested, moving the playground closer to the school. And we've now actually, in an even more recent iteration, which you're not seeing, have relocated some parking spaces to the far east of the site over into the center of the site, which gets them out of the kind of wetland buffer zone more. But the site is, is continues to be really, there have been multiple iterations of it. It continues to be developed as we move along. This is an interesting diagram that we wanted to go through with the School Building Committee. If during construction, so the construction phase, this whole site's going to be surrounded by a big construction fence, right? And you're not going to be able to get in there. Contractors will come and go through gates. They'll park in there. They'll put their materials in there. They'll demolish the old Lynch School in there. One of the issues is, does the town, does the district, does anybody want to keep the soccer fields to the north open and operational during construction? And that has not necessarily been fully vetted. So we're not saying, you know, what, what should happen. We just wanted to bring up what might happen if in fact we want to keep those soccer fields open. If they want to stay open, we need to be able to get people back there reasonably, accommodate that reasonably safely. And we need to be able to accommodate some maybe parking on site. So one of our proposals was, well, if you kept the, the parking spaces to the far and the east, which are kind of low, right below the, the finished floor of the Lynch, the, the parking spaces, the far east of the building during construction and then put the construction fence behind that, then you could maintain, you know, maybe 20 parking spaces. And there is a gravel road that goes up to the field. You could potentially keep that gravel road open and people could park and walk up. It's only 20 spaces. It's not going to accommodate a whole lot of parents. It's not going to accommodate visiting parents if there were competitive games up there for youth league. So it's still a work in progress, but we want, and we did talk about it some at the, at the building committee. I don't think any full resolution was, was had, but, but it is, it's a, it's a question mark that's out there, which is how, how do we accommodate or do not accommodate that? And I know Meg White was going to reach out to recreation and sort of start a internal town discussion about what they really wanted to see have happened. But this is an interesting question that will have to get resolved as we move forward. The floor plans you have seen, and by the way, these floor plans and Chris was kind enough to remind me to, to make mention of this. They, these floor plans are on the website, the project website for anybody who wants to review them. You have seen these at the last presentation I gave to you. There have been no dramatic changes. One of the conversations we did have at that last meeting was, well, there should be a gender neutral toilet on each floor for students. That has been added on each floor. And otherwise they are fairly consistent with what you saw. So I'm not going to spend a lot of time on first floor, second floor, third floor. Again, they're available to be viewed. And, you know, if the project moves forward, these plans will continue to get further refined. And, and we will have, if the project moves forward, we will, we will get, begin a second, you know, we did a first, we did a first round of conversations with the staff about these plans. And we would do another round with kind of all the teachers and staff relative to the layouts here if the project moves forward. But these are the kind of conceptual plans that at least get us to schematic design or at least get us to that all-important cost estimate. We did develop some interior images and you have not seen these. These are new. And they really, again, are very conceptual. They're placeholders, but, but it's a chance to begin to start a conversation. And we're actually working on refining these now. It is, it begins the conversation about what the school could be like. This would be a view in the lobby looking north towards the soccer fields. I mean, not literally looking towards the soccer fields, but in that direction. The gym on your left, a stair that goes up to the second floor on your left, a ramp with a gentleman holding his coat, which is very well pressed on the right, walking up that ramp and some kids hanging out here. And we might be able to create some kind of nice space under that stair that's usable. We could create more transparency in the gym. There's a lot we can do. But what we wanted to do was get a conversation started about what the interiors could feel like. This is turning around and looking the other direction. So now you're looking towards the main entrance. You're looking up at where the art classroom would be on the second floor overlooking the lobby. You're seeing the backside of that stair. And we, we, I, we brought in some pictures from other projects just to show what we're talking about. Like on the right is a project where kids are sitting under a stair. Different kind of situation, but the idea is you can, you can use some of these spaces that you might imagine to not be particularly productive spaces for interesting things for kids. And small humans, you know, can fit in interesting places and use them as long as it meets code, which it would in, in, in fun ways. And they can become little presentation zones or hangout zones or all kinds of neat things. We talked a little bit about environmental graphics, about what you could do on the wall with graphics. This is a project where we had kind of an art and music space and did have graphics on the walls. We talked about kind of materiality, what we could put on the floor. Those are porcelain tiles on the floor. None of this is set in stone. It was all just to begin a conversation. And again, what we're doing at this phase is just securing a cost estimate. We're not making selections. We're not making decisions. We're, we're basically saying, this is sort of the level of fit and finish we're talking about. These are the sort of styles of things we're talking about. These will get us an estimate. If the project passes, then we move forward with really drilling down, picking what we're going to pick. But so this is the same project, kind of, this is actually, believe it or not, a metal ceiling, which is less expensive than a wood ceiling, but it appears to anybody's looking at it to be a wood ceiling. You know, signage, these kind of things. So that was the point of the exercise. This is an image on the second floor with the lobby below, the third floor, end of the third floor corridor above. Art would be on your right. Lot Media Center would be on your right. The rest of the school would be beyond you. Here is, as you well know, the VO we talked about, you know, here, the Vincent Owen sisters were featured in a graphic. As you know, we might be able to do something like that at the Lynch School. Possibly we talked about that. Here's kind of one of those open to below spaces that, that again, we thought this was a good example. Here is a kind of conceptual view of the cafeteria, again, really just placeholders. Nothing that we feel very comfortable is going to necessarily stand the test of time, but we wanted to just start getting images out there. But, you know, kind of high windows and low kid scale windows, some glazing in the corners, something happening in the ceiling that makes it an interesting space. And then of course, interestingly, the VO has some of that as well and has high windows in the front as well as sort of more human scale windows in the front. So, you know, you, 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 you can find examples of things. Here is a kind of classroom corridor with, with cubbies and some kind of, again, environmental graphics. And it doesn't have to be environmental graphics. It could be paint. But to try to start to create zones for the kids where there's some wayfinding and there's some sense of identity. A member of the building committee did bring up the idea of kind of themed sort of zones, themed houses, if you will, within the school that we're going to think about. And this is a different building that again, shows you some of the ways you can identify zones on the floor or in the ceiling through color or texture. Here's a typical classroom at the Lynch, pretty standard stuff, but with some color. Again, that can be pulled out of the corridor. And that's what we, so that's what we presented to the building committee at the last, last meeting. We have another meeting tonight that will go through more detail, again, just talking through the summary of, the summary of the submission we're making to the MSBA. We'll talk about progress. We'll probably hopefully have a few updated images for the building committee tonight as well. So that's where we are. So that's where we are with the project, and we, as we move briskly, walk briskly to the, we're not running, we're walking briskly to the finish line of getting this thing submitted next week to the MSBA, so.
Thank you so much, Mr. Hay, it's always exciting to have you come and see the progress that's happening behind the scenes. I really appreciate you bringing the interior shots of the building too, it really helps sort of the space come to life and be able to help the committee really picture what's happening. Did you want to add something to the presentation, Mr. Nixon?
I sure, just a quick footnote on the issue of fields and access. Charlie did that little exercise in part because we expressed our interest in continuing to have the fields available. As we know, we, we actually have a shortage of field space in Winchester, so I can share that this white actually did get a hold of both Mr. Aria and our director Nick, they were both very appreciative. And Nick has actually added this to the schedule, the fields, of course, are not really used in the winter, so there will be some impact, but somewhat limited. So this is absolutely on his radar, and I don't think in any way is like a game changer, there would obviously need to be some communication. If we continue to have, you know, the Bay's League soccer folks come, for instance, got a lot of out of town visitors who would typically come off of Route Three, you know, Ponce Peak. At any rate, it's on his radar, was appreciative for the communication.
I, and I appreciate you, Mr. Nixon, adding that in, and if you could also, as our field management rep, just keep us in the loop of how that's working out and being thoughtful about that ahead of time, because as you mentioned, we are short field space in town, so I'm sure that everyone appreciates us being thoughtful about our shared space as well.
Absolutely, will do.
Questions from the committee for Mr. Hay? Mr. Hopcroft?
I'll just say, I wanted to thank Mr. Hay again, yeah, I appreciate, you know, there's such a strong sense of community at Lynch and the the different zones that you're creating within the school and the branding and the sense of belonging in those different areas, I think is is really wonderful, so I, I appreciate that. And imagine as this process goes on, you know, we'll be getting further updates on on sustainability and security and other things as they come together, but um, but but from my point of view, it's great, great progress you guys are making, so I appreciate it very much.
Any other member questions? I just had a quick question maybe for Dr. Hackett and Mr. Hay. Mr. Hay mentioned getting staff input on the educational spaces, which I think is absolutely fabulous and vital for the people who will be actually using the space, obviously, the September first admission comes right after we've started school again. Where will be the opportunity for the Lynch community, the parent input phase again?
Well, to use Mr. Hay's term, we will be walking briskly. Not running and not running with scissors. As soon as school starts, we'll, we will be having multiple sessions with with staff to update everybody, because obviously, there's been a ton of work done. Just the way the timing of this particular project has happened through the MSBA timeline with a good chunk of work, as you can see, has been done over the course of the summer. But it it still is certainly we still want feedback, we will seek feedback from from parents and from staff members. There are certain things that, you know, are at this point kind of locked in, but there are a lot of things that still aren't. You know, we haven't even begun to have a conversation about furniture, for example, and what, you know, the the kinds of things that directly impact teaching and learning or teachers' workday instructional day in students, so there there's still time for some good feedback, a lot around a lot of things. You know, and the timeline will allow for that, but the building is where the building's going, the stories are, the stories we have, the location of the of the spaces are, the location, I mean, certain things, we're at this, at the point right now in the design where, you know, that's, it is what it is, which I think is, it's fantastic, I think, I think Charlie and his team have done a great job listening and taking feedback. There were a lot of sessions that happened over the course of last year to some focus group sessions on some specific spaces, some of the, you know, art, PE, music, those, the spaces that are more specialized. So I think he's done a fantastic job incorporating all those, all those suggestions and details, and even listening to me on occasion, because I do pretend sometimes that I have a degree in architecture, and I think we all know I don't, so.
And I appreciate you incorporating our feedback on the gender neutral bathrooms so quickly as well, I'm sure that will be important and valuable to a lot of our community members, so I appreciated seeing that in the new design. Are there any other member questions? Ms. Bollinaze?
Oh, yes, I was just wondering, I, I think there's a member on the committee or on the working group as well from the DAC, is there feedback from anything or from the DAC or from the, or from Winchamp? Along the way?
Dr. Hackett, is that, will that come with the interior spaces of the building as we look towards?
I'll, I'll let Mr. Hay ask the questions, just in general accessibility and the requirements of of what needs to be met, and you're right, we do have a member of the accessibility commission on the group, who has been a pretty active member. You know, to this point, there's nothing that's been raised by that member or anyone else that specific to accessibility, I think generally because Mr. Hay and his team have have designed it for accessibility, but.
Yeah, I was, forgive me, I have a frog in my throat, I was trying to follow the acronyms and and having trouble there for a minute, but yes, the building, and we have talked about it. The building is fully accessible and fully code compliant. And, you know, the MSBA, to their credit, reminds the districts and the designers through requiring narratives around code compliance at each submission. So we in writing state that these buildings are are compliant, and when I say compliant, that is not, that's both accessibility and life safety code compliance, we taught, we, we, in in our narratives that we'll submit with this coming submission is a a summary of code, you know, what codes we're building, we're designing to, which of course are the most current codes. So we've made an effort to do that, of course, one of the bugaboos with projects is always the site. Making sure the site is compliant, because that's a lot harder than a building after all, because you have to deal with natural topography. And the site designers have done a good job of thinking through all of that, making sure our walkways meet code. Making sure we don't have any outdoor spaces that are not accessible to 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 all members of the community, so I think we're in a good place with that. And again, of course, with, it gets, if the project passes the town meeting and and the debt override, and if the project proceeds, we will, of course, continue to drill down. I mean, that's the way these projects go, right, as you well know, because you've overseen multiple ones. You get more and more granular as you go, but we're pretty comfortable that we, that the bones of this project will, in fact, support a completely accessible project.
Is that true of sustainability as well, it will get drilled down as we go along?
Yes, well, I mean, there've been pretty robust conversations about sustainability all the way along, that, that's really, that's been forefront. There is a sustainability subcommittee as part of the building committee. There've been a whole lot of, there've been multiple subcommittee meetings. There is a strategy for getting to certain level of lead, we have talked to Eversource about their pathway grant programs. We have talked about the, you know, making sure we meet stretch code. So I think that the 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 sustainable conversations are well along as well.
Thank you, Mr. Hay, Mr. Nixon?
Thank you, Ms. Bergstrom, so I, I wanted to circle back on the accessibility question. One of the things that we did, well, little backstory, Ambrose, which was another TAPA project, as you know, had a modular classroom addition that was done back around 2008, that was not with TAPA, it was with another architect. And some of the elements of that project were designed literally to the T of what is required by the ADA, so I'm talking about things like depth of landing, height of risers, depth of treads, slopes for ramps and so forth. So the architectural drawings were actually correct, they were compliant. But literally to the limit of what ADA requires. And of course, there are some fundamental attributes of the materials that we build with, concrete slumps, asphalt slumps, you can have compression of the subbase material. Buildings actually move, et cetera, et cetera. So what we did a little differently on VO, working with Charlie and his team and the landscape architect, and the landscape architect on the new Lynch is the same landscape architect we worked with at VO. So we actually made an effort to dial it back a little bit, so the ADA will allow a certain percentage of slope, for instance, in a ramp. What we said to the TAPA team was, don't design it to that limit, design it a little flatter to account for some of the variability in construction and in the construction materials. And we wanted to do that because we have experience in Winchester, as some of you know, we hire disability access consultants who come into town, they take a smart level, they throw it down on the ground, and you're either in compliance or you're not. So those are some of the things that I expect we will continue to do on this project, again, that's very granular, so that's not really a schematic design issue. But beyond being sure that we have, you know, the number of things where we have the kind of accessible routes that are required to be really sure that it's compliant, we can sort of dial back the design standard a little bit, let's say, to be even a little more conservative, if that makes sense, and I expect we'll follow that path here too.
Thanks, Mr. Nixon, your experience on this is really valuable to us, we appreciate that. Are there any other questions for Mr. Hay, Dr. Hackett on the Lynch project?
I would just say one more thing related to accessibility, and the conversation with technology, Dr. Ellen Emma raised a question of audio amplification within the classroom, so there will be some things along the way that will be looked at, even as we, with furniture, for example, and technology that will also be addressing not just accessibility, but really trying to maximize, you know, the whole principle of universal design for all kids.
That's awesome, thank you.
And Ms. Bergstrom, if I can chime in, I wanted to ask before we lose Charlie. Dr. Hackett, would this be an appropriate time to just make a public service announcement about our scheduled discussion tonight at the EFPBC around the debt exclusion override? I think it would be important to say a word or two about that, given what we've been saying publicly.
I think it would be wicked helpful if you are the one who does it, because I don't remember the dates now.
Okay, well, I'll, I'll do my best, and and I hope Charlie, you don't mind just sticking around for a couple of moments in case there's questions about schedules that pertains to you. So this committee, you know, is certainly aware that for, it almost feels like two years now, certainly a year and a half anyway. We've been talking about a debt exclusion override to the new Lynch in January. And I think it was at our last meeting with Charlie, we had talked about how that date had been pinned down to January seventh. So since we last had a school committee meeting, our town clerk and management has really studied hard working with the Secretary of State and even the MSBA, trying to find opportunities for what Mary Ellen calls a dual election, that is, you you will literally show up and get two paper ballots, one for the state election that's being held, and then you get a separate ballot for the project. There was strong interest on the part of the clerk with support of management that we look at holding this election concurrent with the election in November. That is a lot earlier than January. They, as I think the committee knows, there's a hundred and twenty day clock that comes with the MSBA in terms of their approval of schematic. So we're going to submit on September first. The board, we're still scheduled for the board to vote the project on October twenty sixth. Beginning with that vote, which we expect will be favorable, there is a hundred and twenty day clock that begins running. And it's within that hundred and twenty days that we have to do two things. We need an approval from town meeting on the project funding agreement, which is a very detailed, lengthy document, gets into the weeds on costs, et cetera. We also have to have a debt exclusion override. On the VO project, which actually did have a debt exclusion override in January, that was a special election that was tethered to a sort of a regular town meeting. And we did the same thing at Winchester High School, we had a regular town meeting, and then we had a special election, as I recall. So in this instance, our plan had been to go to fall town meeting with a project funding agreement. And then within that hundred and twenty days, we would then go to the town for a debt exclusion override on January seventh. The proposal that has been made has actually been to change that schedule, to shorten that schedule, and to actually go to the town in November. Some towns do this, we've not done it that way before. And, and so that's something that the EFPBC is going to be talking about tonight. The select board chair and the town manager would like to know that the EFPBC is comfortable with this. You know, Charlie, you know, certainly seems to be comfortable with it, it's a way to kind of keep things going, we, we should also just share with the committee, the EFPBC will, is planning on bringing forward an article to Fall Town Meeting to reappropriate the remaining funds from the feasibility study, we appropriated 1.5 million dollars, we were very conservative at that time. And there's quite a bit of money left, six figures. That money can only be spent on feasibility, so our, our purpose in putting forward an article at Fall Town Meeting would be to reappropriate those monies to make them available sort of for the general project, so it's another way to keep Charlie and his team moving. So if the EFPBC should go along with this suggestion, I think it, it, in a way, we're sort of building ourselves a shorter runway. Everybody, a lot of folks still away for vacation, of course. Ms. Bergstrom or Mr. Hopcroft asked the question about how we communicate, you know, with the Lynch community, I would expand that and just say the talent community at large. Because the proposal is to actually have the debt exclusion override in November, so we will. I like Dr. Hackett's expression, running but walking quickly but without scissors, it's going to be really quite a sprint. We are going to leverage the heck out of the project website, keep putting information up there, I want to remind people they can ask questions at Lynch2025faq@gmail.com. Dr. Hackett, you'll get a kick out of this, the last question over the weekend came from a district in Maine who's following this project. We'd love to get some more questions from Winchester, but the email works. So I, I wanted this committee to be aware of that, because the project website even right now says debt exclusion override in January, because unless that changes, that's what it will be. But there is a very serious proposal on the table to shorten that. So I, I'll shut up and ask Dr. Hackett if he has anything he wants to add, and, you know, I, I feel with Charlie with us, it would be helpful if he could just sort of reiterate, you know. My understanding is it doesn't affect the TAPA team too much in terms of schedule, given that we were going to be seeking reappropriation of the feasibility dollars. Certainly, it would be wonderful if we get the debt exclusion override out of the way sooner rather than later, and the project passes. I want to remind the committee, debt exclusion override questions do not actually include the cost, that's actually in the project funding agreement that goes to town meeting. So just as we did on the McCall expansion project in Winchester High School and Vincent Owen, we need to be able to say what the project is going to cost, but almost more importantly, people want to know what is the project going to cost me, what's going to happen to my tax bill? So for that, we need not only project cost, we need some decisions from management and select board around bonding terms at twenty or twenty-five years. We have a baseline reimbursement rate from the MSBA on this project that was set during eligibility, that is just a floor. So a lot of the work that Charlie and his team have been doing, not only around sustainability, but other things, we expect are going to give us additional reimbursement points. So our OTM, which is Hill, they are working, they're supporting us with the MSBA and trying to finalize that, so we need to know project cost, need to know reimbursement, we needed a bonding term, and of course, speculate on interest rates, I don't want to do that right now, given how crazy everything is. There's a lot that I think we'll need to work very closely with the select board and management on. Mr. Nardone and I just emailed the select board chair on this last week, so that we can just as quickly as we can give people a pretty fair range of what the impact of this project is going to be on their tax bill, just as we've done in the past, so that's, I think, a big task for us. Once Charlie gets that reconciled estimate in, and then, of course, we go through and look at the various things that contribute to project cost in addition to construction cost. All right, I'm going to shut up, but I would love if Dr. Hackett has anything to say, and maybe just ask Charlie, do you, if you had any thoughts about, sort of just confirm this proposal may not necessarily affect you and your team in terms of schedule?
Correct, it certainly won't, it won't impact it negatively. May give us a little bit of a jumpstart, it's pretty consistent with what a lot of other communities do, I love, most communities tend to I love, most communities tend to schedule their override votes and their town meeting votes quite close together. So this would be more consistent with what we've seen elsewhere. And it's a benefit to the project because it just gets us going a little bit. I mean, we lose a lot of the holiday season anyway to inefficiency. So we would, we would, the difference between starting in late, you know, early December and early January isn't too significant, but it helps us. It doesn't hurt us.
Dr. Hackett, did you have anything else to add? No, I think Mr. Nixon covered it pretty thoroughly. So seeing, thank you very much for that update, Mr. Nixon. That is a big change to our project timeline. So it's good that the committee is aware of that. If there are no other questions on it, I will thank Mr. Hay for joining us today. And I would encourage any committee members who still have questions about any of that to get in touch with Dr. Hackett and see when you're processing this information, if you have anything more that comes up. And with that, I
All of you.
Thanks, Mr. Hay.
Thanks. I appreciate it.
And with that, we will move on to the next item on our agenda, which is a Washington DC update. I'm just going to start by saying, before we address this topic, that we are not voting on anything regarding a Washington DC trip today. That last year, our trip was canceled due to a spike in COVID cases. Mr. Lynn is here with us today to update us on the, the planning for this trip for this year and the status of that. Mr. Lynn.
Hi. Good morning, everybody. Thanks for having me. So we started talking about the trip for this coming school year last May. And we hit a pretty big stumbling block just right off the gate. And that big stumbling block is the lack of interest in the McCall staff to be the coordinators. For those of you that has children have participated in a trip before, you know that we typically have three staff members that functions as coordinators. And those positions are funded by the tour company that we work with, which is World Strides. And last year, we have two, we used to have three people that coordinated the trip. Last year, we have two, and those are two pretty experienced folks who has done this trip for multiple years. And for this school year, one of them retired and indicated she would prefer not to come back and just to do the trip. And the other individual also indicated to me that she no longer has the interest or the ability to take on such a big task. And so we posted that position, or we informed the staff that we're looking for folks to take on the coordinator position. And since May, we have basically nobody stepping up and say, that's something that I would like to do. I've actively reached out to some of my staff member who has coordinated trips in the past, for example, international trips. But those people also said, this is a very different responsibility, because we talked about 300 something students versus 20 students. And so again, there are no interest. I just recently reached out to the staff through an email through DL and just asking people if they're interested. And right now, I got no response. And certainly at the next Monday's faculty meeting, I'll bring it up again. But it's, I'm not very hopeful that there will be anybody. I mean, if they had told me that, if they're interested back in May. I mean, if they're interested now, they probably will be interested back in May. And the only people that hasn't, I haven't approached will be the incoming staff. Given the fact that all these folks are new to teaching, the idea of them taking on such a big task is hard to imagine that any new teachers will want to do that. And so essentially, this is where we are right now. And so until we can figure out a way to overcome the hurdle of finding coordinators and given that it's going to be people that has never done this before, we're looking at three people at the minimum to take on this task. And so until we can find those three people that's willing to do so, moving ahead to the next step, like talking about chaperones, talking about what the trip is going to look like, looking at the agenda, we just can't move forward to that phase of the planning if we don't have any coordinators.
Mr. Lynn, what's your anticipation of getting chaperones if you're unable, if you were able to get the coordinators?
It's hard to tell right now. I know that last year at this time, there's quite a lot of interest. We were able to get the amount of chaperones that we need. But once we hit January with that huge spike in COVID, the interest dramatically decreased. I haven't had a chance to ask my staff to see if they're interested, mostly because if we don't have the coordinators, trying to figure out who's interested in being a chaperone. That's a moot question, because, you know, when nobody's there to coordinate that part, even if we have enough chaperones, we just can't run the trip.
Any other questions, committee members? Mr. Hopcroft?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Lynn, for the, for the update. And I'm sorry to hear about the difficulty in finding coordinators for this. I know last year, the trip was canceled. We ran a number of alternate programs, day programs or whatnot. Can you tell us a little bit about what you might have in mind this year? Should you not be able to run the trip to DC? Are you still able to do these others? Is there interest in that or be aware as you're thinking on that?
Absolutely. I think if we don't do the trip, I would definitely start planning as soon as end of September and October last year. Once we decided not to go on a trip and started planning for alternatives at around, I think it was February. And even looking at it at that time, there's a lot of venues just weren't available to us. Number one is because of the staff shortage at the venues themselves. And number two is because of the size of our eighth graders. And so my thinking is, if we make a decision that DC is a no-go, at some point in the fall, we will begin planning for the end of the year trip for eighth graders or even just, you know, different opportunities for eighth graders as soon as the fall. And we certainly will have a whole lot more options if we start planning early in the school year. And so the way I see it is, we, we had a lot of success last year with the Odyssey boat trip. So I'd love to explore other opportunities for kids to have more about bonding and fun things for the end of the year. I know there are some parents that reach out to me lamenting the fact that not being able to go to DC took away the civics education piece. But, you know, we live in a state that has a lot of history right here. And so if we plan early enough, we can certainly integrate a lot more historical civics-related trips for the kids, not just at the end of the school year, but also during the school year as well. So it all depends on when we can start thinking about planning. Now, I think I will, I will want to be cautious about doing both. DC and basically a revamped eighth grade experience, mostly just because of the cost of the trip that we will need to pass on to the families. And I know that some families are having a hard time with all the financial pieces going on, caused by the inflation. So if we were to do both, we certainly will need to scale back on the end of the year experience for the eighth grade. However, if we don't do the DC trip, then that opens up a lot of opportunities for us to enhance that trip experience for the kids, both the fun piece and also the civics and history education piece.
Mr. Nixon.
Thank you, Ms. Bergstrom. Good morning, Mr. Lynn. I, so I have a suggestion. I have a serious suggestion for this committee, but it would, it would need support from administration and Mr. Mahoney. So I want to remind the committee, the last cohort of kids who went to Washington DC are now seniors at Winchester High School. Our student reps, in my opinion, bring a wealth of information and perspective to the table. I would love it if there's a way to engage either with our student reps or our class officers at Winchester High School and ask these kids, who are now young adults, to reflect back on that experience at DC. And was that meaningful? Was that helpful? I would love to know now that they've had some time to reflect back on it, if that was a trip worth taking. If, if there is a strong overwhelming sense of support for the DC trip among our students who last went nearly four years ago, then it, it suggests to me that we need to work hard to find a way to get this tradition back. Because I think everything we do in the district, we should be doing because it has a positive impact on kids and on learning. If we find that upon reflection, the trip wasn't everything it was cracked up to be, or there's not strong support, it makes me a little more comfortable in kind of moving away from it. Every year that goes by that we don't do it is, it's a harder, it's a harder thing to sort of get it back. And in addition to, you know, the teachers, Mr. Lynn talked about, the school resource officer has played an important part in that trip as well in planning. And of course, our longtime SRO just retired a couple of years ago. So I, I wonder what committee members think about it. I wonder if Dr. Hackett, you know, what do you think about the idea of reaching out to, again, either senior class officers or our student reps? I would just, I'd love to get some feedback, much as we did about COVID. What's, what's different that's working well? What would you like to see continue? I, I think I would really value their input.
Just, you know, initial reaction, I think it always makes sense to get feedback from kids based on any kind of experience that we, that we provide. I, I think it would be, it definitely would be worth it. It would be interesting to know if they can put themselves back in their eighth grade headspace and think about, you know, when they came in as sixth graders and, you know, this trip apparently, and it's been this true elsewhere I've been, there's, there's a buildup to it that may or may not be, I think there's probably anxiety provoking for kids too. But it's also could be exciting for kids. I think that certainly is part of a larger conversation. It would be worth having. I, I wonder some whether or not this, the issue that we're dealing with right now, if that is going to change. I mean, I, some of my colleagues are having the same issue elsewhere. And I think partly it's because you ask, when we ask people to do a whole lot of coordination, I think Mr. Lynn would attest to the fact that that would start day two of school and not even to mention the amount of work that goes into it from a, from the health office and nursing perspective in preparation for this trip like this. And then to, you know, have it pulled out because of a health issue, specifically obviously COVID. But I just think we are in a world now where things change pretty rapidly. And, you know, it's, it's hard to mount an effort, get kids excited, raise the money, you know. All of it is, is, takes months to do. You know, I think Mr. Lynn did a really good job trying to navigate that last year. We were on, then we were off, then we're on, and then we're off. And I think, you know, pulling together, what he pulled together in the last couple of months of the school year was, was a, was a great effort in very short time. And, but I, you know, not to be, you know, not to go on, but I, I think that that's, that's worth of the conversation. I, you know, I think administratively, I'd like to have a chance to talk to Mr. Lynn and maybe staff and just kind of get a sense for how people are thinking about it.
I, I would also add, Dr. Hackett, that I appreciate Mr. Nixon's suggestion, but I think it's hard to ask students, not only four years later, but also comparing it to what? If your choice is a DC trip or nothing, the DC trip would look much more appealing than nothing if they don't have anything to compare it to. So I think understanding what the alternative would be, would be important. And I think it's also a little premature if we don't have the staff to do it. If it's a school-sponsored trip and we need the staff, it seems like the first hurdle is going to be making sure that we have the staff to coordinate the trip. I saw Mr. Hopcroft's hand next, and then Mr. Mahoney.
Yeah, no, I was just thinking, I've heard a lot of really great things about the trip. And, you know, it's something that the kids look forward to and they're building towards all year long. You know, it's a bonding experience where they get away overnight, you know, you know, with their friends. There's a civics piece of it, et cetera. You know, as, as you're exploring this, you know, you know, with whatever groups of people you explore it with, you know, articulating what the, you know, you know, what the goals are and the priorities would make it easier to, to be able to figure out, okay, what's the cost benefit analysis on this? You know, obviously, there's a large cost in terms of organization and staff and, and financial expense for going, but sort of understanding, you know, that, you know, hey, it's worth it because, you know, you know, there's overriding thing. Or there's a way we can, we can accomplish those goals in a less staff intensive or in a, you know, more. Yeah, I don't recall if you've done day trips or how you broke it out, you know, as well as thinking about participation. I know there's, I think, 300 something kids going that, you know, I'm not sure what that breaks down to in terms of the overall percentage. But how many aren't going? What are they doing, et cetera? And thinking about, you know, the, the options you can provide. But I guess I just put out, it's not clear to me what, which, which of those is the driving goal. And I don't know if you know it now, but just, you know, as you're going through the process, create a clear articulation of that. And there, I think in most cases, you know, you can get to a goal in multiple ways. And, and it's then you can evaluate, you know, what the best path is, what, what's the cost benefit.
Yeah, I'm sure if I could just make a suggestion. We didn't really come here today prepared to kind of have a full conversation about what's next, because we're not convinced yet that this isn't still an option. I think to Mr. Lynn's earlier point, he has a, he does have a first staff meeting coming up, getting people back in the building. I'm sure within a couple of weeks or so, he'll have a, probably a more definitive answer as to where this looks like it's going. And then I would, we'd love to have the opportunity to come back to you with this, to Lynn, with some, some ideas and suggestions and maybe have a fuller conversation at that point to include getting some feedback from students who have, who have previously gone on the trip. But I didn't want this to take too much time on the agenda. This is, and we have, do have quite a bit more left. So from my perspective, we're all good on what we needed to have you here, but it's up to you, obviously, as chair.
No, thanks, Dr. Hackett. You actually took the words out of my mouth. I was just going to say that Mr. Lynn was just here today to let us know to make sure we're in the loop about this so that it's not a surprise. There's nothing for us to vote on. So unless anyone else has anything significant to add, I think we're going to move on to our, our handbooks. I saw Mr. Mahoney's, must have gotten his question answered. So that us move on to the consideration of the student handbooks. There is an action required on this today. Each year, the school committee votes to approve our student handbooks. And there are no substantive changes to the handbooks that are in draft form and ready for our consideration. Everyone should have seen the handbook summary of the proposed changes that are coming before us. I think the most significant one is regarding the off-campus lunch at the high school and the, the changes that are coming there. Mr. Mahoney, if you would like to add anything about that, please feel free to jump in.
Sure. I invited Ms. Paradise and Ms. Conus today to also present, if there's any questions regarding the handbook, because they, they work in the handbook a lot more than I do. But first of all, thank you very much for having me. And it's happy, happy to see everybody's faces again. And we're excited to start the school year. It's right around the corner. So we are pretty ready to go, but you never know what happens in the next couple of days. That being said, the off-campus piece of the handbook is, we changed it two years ago for full off-campus to accommodate the cafeteria for COVID, COVID measures. And as we're moving beyond those particular COVID measures, historically, at Winchester High School, juniors and seniors have had off-campus privilege during lunches and nobody else. We had very successful the last two years, but I think for school safety and just the most appropriate setting for our students over the next year. In this year and next year, we will be peeling back to, back to juniors and seniors only. So the current rising sophomores had open campus. We don't want to take that away from them. But the incoming eighth graders, the rising ninth graders have not had that. So we're going to start with the ninth graders will stay on campus. And then as those ninth graders become sophomores next year, they'll still be on campus. And the, the eighth graders rising next year will also be on campus again. So we're just going back to how we used to run lunches at Winchester High School pre-COVID.
And Mr. Mahoney, that doesn't prevent anybody from going outside as long as they stay on school grounds at lunches.
We would prefer that students eat outside, get some fresh air, get some sunlight. We beefed up over the last couple of years, benches, chairs, outdoor seating. And we do have a nice, open, I mean, we have a lot of outdoor space that we want the kids to use. So no, we would prefer on, on a nice day or even, you know, a day like today, go outside, sit outside with your friends. If you're a freshman, if you're a sophomore, and get that fresh air. But we just don't want people leaving campus, crossing the street, you know, going downtown. We just want to repeal that back a little bit, and it's going to take two years, which is again, a slow, a slow reversal.
Great. Thank you. Are there any questions from committee members about the handbooks from Ms. Conus, Ms. Paradise, Mr. Mahoney? I see Mr. Lynn is still with us. If you have any middle school questions. Ms. Bollinay?
I have one. Can you hear me?
I do. I just called on Ms. Bollinay's. Can you?
Oh, sorry.
The, should no problem.
Um, I just had a question on, um, the lead-in sentence for the off-campus policy, because I couldn't tell if it was just referring, I know that you're saying that we're transitioning back to, um, just having the 11th and 12th graders, um, for open campus and then, um, grandfathering in the 10th, uh, rising 10th graders. Um, but in the sentence, it seemed like it also said all grades nine through 12 may leave campus for their assigned lunch block only.
Let me take that question if I could. That was, that's my error on the summary.
Okay.
That should be, I crossed, I crossed through all grades nine through 12, didn't make it to the, uh, handbook summary. But while I have the mic for just one second, I would also just, uh, did have a very astute member who is very thorough, um, and wife, probably she's on the policy subcommittee. Also, uh, pointed out that in the elementary handbook, we had a paragraph on remote learning as an option for inclement weather, non-school days. Uh, that's on page 22, uh, that, uh, will be a limit, that needs to be eliminated because that is not an option from DUCI. So, uh, to the actual summary, there was that, there's that additional, that addition or change. And also, uh, to point out that the handbook itself, uh, is correct at the high school in terms of how it's warranted. It was my, my, that's my error.
Thanks, Dr. Hackett. Mr. Nixon.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. So, uh, Mr. Mahoney, um, good morning. Um, I, I wanted to go back to that, but you made a point a moment ago. I thought I heard you say the past two years, the expanded off-campus privileges were successful. If that's the case, if I heard that right, you know, I'd like to hear more about then why change it. Um, one of the things that that we asked our students rep, student reps to weigh in on was, you know, COVID forced us to, to really react and make some changes. And were there some things, were there some changes that were worth keeping? My understanding is this has been really popular among the students. So if it has been successful, I want to throw that back to you and say, so then why change it? Why go back? Um, and maybe in your answer, could you maybe distinguish between freshmen and sophomores? Because I do appreciate there's a big change going from McCall to the high school, but why would we want to restrict this opportunity even for sophomores two years from now?
Uh, that's a good question, Mr. Nixon. So first and foremost, it's a school safety issue. Uh, the more we can keep kids close to campus, close to, you know, around us, the safer we feel that they are. Um, there's certainly instances of the ninth grade, you know, the, the underclassmen struggling to get to class on time, um, and, and come back from lunch. There is a, a learning curve that has to happen there. It wasn't unsuccessful. I want to make sure that that's clear. A lot of this stuff is, is little stuff. Uh, but it's really a school safety issue. And I think we run a safer school with, with one point of entry and the older students are able to drive, um, out, out and about. We prefer that they don't drive, of course, but it, you know, that's the, their, their choice. And it's really just comes down to keeping our students a little closer than they were for the last two years. So it wasn't, uh, unsuccessful. I wouldn't say it was widely successful either in terms of students getting to back, to class back on time and, and being with, doing what they're supposed to do, but it wasn't terrible. I don't want to paint that picture. And I do know it's popular. I know this is unpopular, but I think that's what's best for keeping our students as safe as, as we're able to keep them.
Okay, thank you.
Seeing no further questions, I'm happy to take a motion. I'll remind the committee that our student handbooks are available digitally. So if there would be, um, any need to update any parts of these, even once we've approved them as they are, we can always, um, take up parts of them again, and they're easy to edit now that everything is available online and live. Mr. Nixon, is your hand still up or did you?
Apologies, I'll take it down.
Okay, thank you. Just making sure before I move on. Um, so I'm happy to take a motion on this.
So moved.
I can.
Um, roll call vote, uh, Mr. Nixon.
I.
Ms. Bollinase.
I.
Mr. Hopcraft.
Hi.
Chair votes aye, and the vote is unanimous. Thank you very much to all the, um, administrators who have joined us here today and, um, the work that you put in to keep our kids safe and to be thoughtful about these student handbooks to help, um, parenting and students navigate our schools. So we really appreciate you being here and good luck with the last week and a half before the kids walk in the door.
Thanks, everybody.
You all. And with that, um, we will move on to our operations update. Um, we have a number of things on the operations update today that, uh, Mr. Marin and Mr. Rowe are with us. Thank you for joining us today. Um, to help us out with, um, there is a, an update, a revision to our, uh, federal grants manual. Um, and a transportation and food service update. We are going to table, um, consideration of adopting the town of Winchester high efficiency bid language for today. Is that correct, Dr. Hackett?
Yes, it is. Actually, I'd like to, um, have a conversation about perhaps going, not a conversation about it, but I'd like to bring it back to policy. Um, because I think we need to clarify a few things there. We also already have a policy on efficiency. So I just want to make sure that we're going through a thoughtful procedure. This is, it's requested by the town. Uh, they would like us to, to have it in place. Uh, we haven't had it in place. So, but we, yes, we still have time, obviously.
Thanks. Um, and with that, I will turn it over to Mr. Marin and Mr. Rowe.
Well, I'd be, I'd be glad to start. Thanks, um, on the federal grants manual review. Um, and we have a revision, uh, that we've uh, now circulated, that, you know, as you know, over the last few years, we've had significant additional federal funding. Um, starting with the coro- coronavirus relief act and the ESR funding that we have and the ARP funding that we have. Um, and so we've, in a number of cases, gone through audit reviews, uh, most of which we've done fine on. We had one finding a year ago that we had to deal with around a, a stipend payment. Um, but i- in the process, it really became clear, um, that we needed to strengthen the documentation that we have. Uh, and so, uh, Mr. Marin really, uh, began this process by taking um, a manual that had actually been recommended to us through Masbo. Uh, and what we've done is we've documented, you know, in a, in a stronger way, the Winchester processes for for a host of areas, you know, focusing in payroll, maybe making sure that we strengthen the process for hiring or documenting the payroll through HR, through the superintendent, through the business office. Um, in accounts payable, it's really documenting the process of how we go through a requisitioning process through purchase order. Um, and contracting where appropriate. Um, and the, um, and simultaneously, uh, there's a significant, um, set of issues around how we have an account structure that can segregate and differentiate between funding sources. Um, and so, uh, the document is really a way for us to show compliance with, uh, very complex federal regulations. Um, and so if you look at the document, I think, um, your eyes will glaze over for much of the, much of the information that's in it. But what it does is it really provides us with a roadmap and it provides us with a, a training opportunity too, because as we have turnover in key staff who are involved in the process of of, um, procurement especially, um, but also on the, on the HR side. It's important that, that we all be on the same page and, and follow the processes. So, um, I really want to, um, tip my hat to, um, Andrew, who spent a significant amount of time um, working on making sure that this document was adapted for Winchester specifically. So I think it's, um, I think it really, um, you know, can serve as a, as a, uh, roadmap for the processes we move forward.
Thank you so much, Mr. Owen. Thank you, Mr. Marin, for all your hard work on that. Dr. Hackett will attest that there's nothing I appreciate more than a good editor and um, somebody who is willing to update documents for us. It's, um, I think it's highly undervalued at times. So thank you to both of you for working on that. Mr. Nixon.
Thank you. Uh, yeah, I, I think it's a great document. Thank you, Peter, and thank you, Andrew, for all your work on this. Um, so it's, have, sitting on the audit advisory committee. Um, there are, uh, a continuing number of issues that we deal with, um, in terms of grant award and funding and auditing and so forth, uh, that kind of go hand in glove with the controller's office. I'm wondering, Peter or Andrew, um, have you shared a draft of this with, uh, Stacy Ward? Did we get any input from her?
Yes, yes.
Question, you know, because obviously she, she has her own, um, strong opinions about process. She, you know, represents the town, uh, she's face the town with our auditor. So, um, yeah, could somebody speak to that?
No, I, uh, but yes, we, we have shared with her and, um, she was particularly, uh, helpful in answering some of the broader questions about how sometimes we aggregate reporting around, um, the differentiation of the segmentation of, uh, account structure. So she, uh, was really helpful around that. Um, and, um, but she reviewed the document and is comfortable um, that it puts us in compliance with what the, um, auditors, especially the federal and now the, the other levels that are looking at us will, will be looking for.
That's terrific. Thank you. I'm, and I appreciate you reaching out to her to get her input.
No problem.
Seeing no other questions, I will move on to our transportation and food service update. Um, the transportation update is specifically around the FY 23 athletics transportation. Um, we received one bid by the deadline at noon on August 9th. And the business office reviewed, um, this bid for responsiveness and completeness. Um, Mr. Marin is recommending that we award the contract to North Suburban Transportation. And the information about the bid register and bid sheet was in your packet if committee members are interested in that. Um, and I believe you also have a food service update for us. Um, if Mr. Rowe, Mr. Marin have anything to add um, to that before I take questions.
Sure. Thanks, Ms. Brooks. Good morning, everyone. Uh, I'll just note that on the athletic transportation bid, we did change the kind of economics of it, of how we want, ask them to bid. So previous years, it was a uh, kind of mileage and hourly rate based bid. Um, and now we switched to a flat fee. We've seen that more uh, become more common in other districts. Uh, and in our review, we think it will save some money on that end. We have some based on athletic director's feedback, we had some significant trips last year for, um, at the sailing team, ski teams, that they go pretty far distances. And now we have the same kind of flat rate, no matter where we're going. So, and that's included in that memo. You'll see it kind of at the, I think it's at third page or the fourth page of that. And then on the food side here, let's get my notes. Uh, just a reminder that the uh, district and the state are universal free meals for all students. Uh, we still want to encourage folks to register, uh, for our free and reduced program. There are additional benefits for that, for SNAP and state health benefits. And it helps, uh, us track data around that. It also helps for, uh, us, uh, waiving transportation fees too. So that's a little on our website to update there. And just a reminder that I think last spring, we learned the committee that the food service program will be going, uh, peanut butter free through their service. So there won't be any peanut butter sandwiches made. Uh, there'll be an alternative sun butter. But Whetson's, our food service provider, won't be using peanut butter products. And let's see. I think that's it, uh, for those two areas.
Thanks, Mr. Marin. And we appreciate your work on the athletic transportation contract. It's good to hear that the, the new strategy might in fact save us money and being thoughtful about that. I really appreciate that. And as well as the, uh, working with food service to, um, remove the peanut allergens from the cafeteria. I know that will be important to some of our families as well. I see, Mr. Nixon, you have a question?
So, uh, a, a comment and then a question. Um, believe it or not, not one, but two finance directors ago, we began kicking around the idea of reducing athletics transportation costs by, um, perhaps leasing of, uh, small vans on our own as a district. Um, that would involve, you know, maybe commercial licenses or class fee licenses, coaches would be driving them and so forth. So that was something John Tizio initiated. And Miss Whitemore continued to study that as well. Once they came into the district, just out of concern, um, as you noted in the presentation, we tend to get only one bid on these RFPs. Um, and for some of our athletics needs, we don't need the full-size yellow school bus. So I, I, I feel like this is an appropriate time to say that is something we have studied in the past. Um, I, my question would be to Dr. Hackett or Mr. Rowe or Mr. Marin, is that something we are continuing to study or is that just really a dead initiative? I mean, if, if, if there are ways, if there are opportunities for us to not just cut costs, but just frankly be more sustainable in terms of the vehicles that we have supporting our athletes. And these are vans that might eventually someday even be electric. I would certainly support studying that, but I, I'm curious if now that we have a new superintendent, we have a, a new finance director, we got an operations manager, where does this initiative sort of stand, if at all?
I, I hope I jump again to say, um, it, it's not something that we acted on reviewing as we went for this contract renewal. Um, and to your point, it, it certainly is um, a model that were you, that was used in a couple of other communities that I'd previously worked in. And I think the athletic director found it was successful. I mean, there, to your point, um, there are issues of making sure that the coaches who would generally be the drivers are licensed and, uh, particular size of the vehicle you want to get. But I think it is a model that can work. Um, and we certainly are prepared to spend some time, um, with the athletic director in looking at that as we, you know, as we go forward.
So, Mr. Nixon, we've had this conversation once before. Um, I did talk to, to Mark about it. Um, I, I'm just candidly tell you that I, I don't like the model. Um, for a lot of reasons, and maybe it's just, maybe selfish reasons, but it makes, we don't, we hire a lot of coaches that are a part of our staff. Um, and I, I'm not always all that comfortable putting kids on in, into vehicles that aren't yellow and relatively larger. Uh, and partly because, uh, when I was way, way long time ago, I mean, there was a school district, a neighboring school district that had a, uh, that lost five kids in a van accident. Um, as part of, um, going to, uh, I thought it was either a field trip or an athletic event. The, the state actually banned the use of vans for any kind of student transportation at that point. Um, I'm not suggesting, you know, it's, so I have kind of an, uh, um, that's my history with it. It just, it does make me nervous. Um, I think it's a requirement that uh, I'm, I'm just not sure that, you know, we have a hard enough time finding coaches. One, two, I just don't know if it's a responsibility we want to put on, on, on people, um, who are hiring on a stipend basis. But, um, having said all that, always willing to have a, you know, continuing conversation around it and certainly recognizing that the athletic transportation costs are, um, have been high. I think the model of going to a flat fee, um, is a, is a step in the right direction, but um, you know, there may be some other opportunities for us to think about how we can, um, really bring down that, that cost a little bit more.
I agree with everything you said, a hundred percent. And to your point about, you know, tragedies in these vehicles, it, it's not something it's limited to, you know, public schools. We all remember the Holy Cross accident a few years ago, um, and that fatality and that, that was a van, actually it was being driven by a coach. So there's always the concern about distraction. So I, I raise it not so much because I'm pushing for it, but I, I just feel like it's in our interest as a public body to be clear with ourselves and with our community, uh, are we or are we not continuing to sort of study something? And it, it sounds like we're not. Um, and that's actually okay, so long as we're sort of clear about that and we kind of understand why. Um, so I'm, I'm comfortable with the answer that you gave. I just, I think it's good because from time to time, the committee has asked where do we stand on it? And the answer has been, well, we're continuing to evaluate it. And I think based on your comments, Dr. Hackett, if, if it's something you're not really inclined to support, um, then we drop it. And I'm okay with that a hundred percent.
Definitely would love to see if there's some other ways that we can even work with some, uh, area school systems to have, um, to, to, to drive down the cost, um, even from a scheduling perspective. Um, and, you know, I said what I said, I do, I, I do feel that way. That's been my experience. It makes me very nervous, but um, I would not want to take any option off the table completely, but that of, of all the options, if there are any others, uh, that would be the one that I would, uh, be, be least likely to recommend to the committee.
It seems like, um, then for moving forward, the North Suburban with the flat rate fee is a good way to go for this year. Um, and to see if that helps us with our costs as well as exploring some other options collaboratively with other school districts. Um, seems to be the way that we're moving and Dr. Hackett.
I would say that's a good summary.
Um, so, and you do not require any action on any of these items today.
Correct.
Mr. Hopcraft, did you have a question before we moved on? Mr. Hopcraft, did you have a question before we moved on?
It's just a, one thank you to everyone who's doing all this great work, I am supportive of, of where this has landed. I should be interested, over time, you know, Mr. Marin, as you're talking to North Suburban for future years, it'd be interesting to get a sense of their roadmap around, you know, identifying their fleets and, and future sustainability efforts. So just want to put that in there before we close out on the issue.
Yep, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Rowe and Mr. Marin, for all your work and always interest, this committee is always interested in sustainability around transportation, buildings. So, and we appreciate your thoughts and efforts around those as well. Thanks, Mr. Hopcraft, for reminding us. So, let's move on to our policy update. The policy subcommittee has tasked Ms. Bollinaze with reviewing our policy manuals, she's been going through and looking for consistency in language and editing, not making any substantial changes necessarily to the policies themselves, but over time, we've noticed that some of the policies may need some minor editorial changes, and she's been reviewing a policy by policy for that. We are going to table consideration of JJF, the student activity policy today until such time that the town's comptroller has been able to provide the policy subcommittees some feedback on that, so Ms. Stacy Ward would be that individual, and we want to make sure that she has an oppor- good opportunity to look at that and provide us feedback. Ms. Bollinaze, did you have anything to add about the work that you're doing around the policy manual?
I think you captured it pretty succinctly. We have been talking about reviewing the policy manual slowly. I did go to an MASC, the Massachusetts School Committee webinar on updating policy manuals, that was earlier in the summer. And basically, they said that it is a long and slow process of just going through it bit by bit. And I, and I had also come across how we had updated it previously back in two thousand fifteen. And basically, after reviewing several, at the, the school committee at that time had gone through all of the, or the policy subcommittee had gone through all of the policies, and then they brought it back chunk by chunk to the school committee for just a final vote to just say that we reviewed it and we've updated it. So I expect that that would be a similar process this time around.
And do you have a timeline on that process, Ms. Bollinaze, do you expect to bring that to us sometime later this fall?
We can aim for that. I was looking back at our notes, and I do believe we said at the end of August, and that, that gave me a little pause, so, but
Are there any questions around that process by the committee?
Just, I would make, also just make a point, you did the handbooks today, I, I think we need to take a look at truncating the amount of policy information that we put into our student handbooks, because what I found as we went through them was that there were policies in there that were, had been updated by the committee. You always kind of run the risk, because the policy manual generally is your, is, should be our go-to, and that should always be up to date because that's your document, that's your setting policy. The handbooks can, at times, you know, if they, if, if not re- bringing all the wording and the verbiage of a policy into a student handbook, we just run the risk of the handbook being not being consistent with the policy manual, and then you have two documents that the committee has voted, because essentially student handbooks are policy too, now that you have voted them. So I think it's just something for us to look at as we go through and do this process again next year. And also, given the fact that everything is fairly digital and more accessible that way, I think that it would be, it would be a good time for us to consider maybe shifting into a little bit more mode of, of linking people to full policy documents with the exception of things like bullying, for example, which I think we should fully include in a student handbook and others.
Thanks, Dr. Hackett, Mr. Nixon, did you have any question about the process or comment about the process that we're going through?
Well, I, I guess it's a, it's a com- I suppose it's a comment about the process and where we sort of are at the interim. I, you know, in, in jumping onto the field management committee, and the chair is aware of this, as is Ms. Bollinaze, I went back to look at some of our policies on Chacha Field and Manchester Field, and I, I realized that the, some of the updates that are available on the website, the, the policies have actually changed pretty substantially in terms of how one reads them, so the fonts have changed, indentations have changed. It appears that in many instances, we've lost capitalization, underlining and so forth, which is, to me, sort of odd in And so I, I do, you know, we had talked previously a hundred percent, I support this, going through and looking at things like pronouns in our policies, I was not aware that we were changing the policies in the word graphically. Sorry about that, can you hear me okay now?
Yep.
Is that okay?
Yep.
Thank you, sorry about that. I feel like policy is, is kind of almost like a legal document. Our, you know, our CBAs or Times New Roman, our policies have been Times New Roman. I think they're very legible, and I'm not going to quibble about specific fonts, because that's way too weedy, but I, I suppose I do have a concern if our policies are changing in sort of graphic structure. And we're losing things like capitalization, underlining, you know, emphasis where it should be, margin changes and so forth. I just wasn't aware that that was a path we were going down, and my, my preference would be to just quite literally stick with the formatting and the fonts that we had previously, and, but, but make the changes that you had, you had commented on in your opener, Madam Chair, that are, that are important to be making. Yeah, so I, I wanted to throw that out there, I, I think it, it, it's difficult for me, actually, when I'm comparing like a new policy versus an old policy, because they, they almost look like completely different documents.
Nope, I'm, Ms. Bollinaze is just going to, it will go through and make sure that they are still readable, that emphases are still the same. And that everything reads consistently, and that it doesn't, doesn't change the heart of the policy itself. So, I would encourage everybody to sit tight on that and wait to see what the final documents look like when she's all done.
I would just also add that we, we are doing and have been doing a side-by-side comparison to try to address the issue that Mr. Nixon just raised. We'll continue to work on that, we've not been able to replicate all of what he's, has raised, and we don't, I don't, don't want to get into the conversation here, but you know, I, we do know that we're about the same number of pages, and you know, there are legal references for all policies that weren't there either, so I don't know how much part, part of my question and wondering has been, we, we're working from what we assume to be the policy book that has been in place, and I think it's a safe assumption, because it was what was posted on the website. But there may, perhaps there are some policies that didn't make it into that policy book. I, I don't know, so we will continue to, to vet that out, we certainly, there is no intent to change the meaning of any policy. And I know that it's painstaking work for Ms. Bollinaze to go through, and she's already raised a lot of good questions on certain policies.
And certainly, if there is anything that your references change, or that we would need to change language, and substantially, those policies will come before this committee for their review and approval. Any, seeing no other questions on that, thanks, Mr. Nixon. Our anticipated agenda items for the next meeting, we need to recognize our retirees from the last school year. We do have the school committee and superintendent twenty-two, twenty-three goals. That's always an interesting conversation, sets the tone for the new school year, we always enjoy that one. And subcommittee assignments, you should be looking for some notification from me regarding what positions we have for subcommittee assignments for this year, and what you may be interested in volunteering to do as a school committee member. Our next meeting dates are August thirtieth at six PM, that would be our school committee workshop, I believe we might dip into some of our goals discussion there as well. September thirteenth at six PM, and September twenty-seventh, back to the school year at six PM. We will need a motion to adjourn to executive session for the following purposes. Purpose two, to discuss strategy with respect to negotiating non-union administrative contracts, because to do so, an open session would be detrimental to negotiation. And purpose four, to discuss the deployment of security personnel or devices or strategies with respect there too. We will not be taking any public action as a result of this executive session. And therefore, we will not be reconvening an open session for adjournment, but adjourning directly from executive session. I will take a motion. And I there we, motion in a second, roll call vote, Mr. Nixon?
Aye.
Mr. Hopcraft?
Aye.
Ms. Bollinaze?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, and we are adjourned this morning, thank you, Mr. Marin, Mr. Rowe, Ms. Kirby, you're still with us, Dr. Ellen Emma. And we will see you after the school year starts. Have a good day, everyone.